The group after is going to do the wave.
He's getting wireless on.
There you go.
Grace updates.
There's no game on. Yeah, actually pay attention. No, they told us that we do the wireless instead of.
My eyes are dry. Keep going like, oh.
Here you go, your cookies.
Oh, she's sweet. Oh, Terry can have these.
That influence.
Sing all morning.
The twenty to remind me of my.
Put it by my, put it by my bag, I'll remember to remind you.
I don't.
Oh.
All right, good morning, or good afternoon. We'll get started here, I think we're all ready to go. And with reconvening after closed session, we will now have invocation led by trustee March Milchiker, followed by the pledge led by trustee Mike Milldown. Please rise. We pray that God gives us blessings for our district, for our Board of Trustees, for our administrators, for our professors, for our classified staff, and for our wonderful students. Amen. And please face the flag.
Please drive in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I'm sorry, trustee Milchiker, are you ready to read the actions taken in closed session?
Yes, first, first action. On a six to zero vote with trustee Fuentes absent, the board approved a modification of an unpaid leave with benefits from January 4th, 2012, through February 27th, 2012, for a classified employee. On a six to zero vote with trustee Fuentes absent, the board approved the exception of teaching an online class in accordance with Article 28, Section 5, in the collective bargaining agreement for a faculty member with the condition of not allowing overload for the fall 2012 and spring 2013 semester.
Okay, thank you. And we now are at the point in our agenda where we have a resolution to present, and this is for District Services Outstanding Manager of the Year, Brandy Delina, would you come forward, please? And chancellor Portner will make the presentation.
Do you want to do it?
Okay.
You've got it this time.
I'm just delighted to read this because Brandy's wonderful. This is February 27th, 2012, Brandy Delina, 2011 District Services Outstanding Manager of the Year. And I really don't know anyone who deserves it more. Whereas Brandy Delina, District Director of Faculty Planning and Purchasing, was selected, was selected by chancellor Gary Portner as the 2011 District Services Outstanding Manager of the Year. And whereas Brandy Delina led a district-wide effort to complete the district's 1,400-page Education and Facilities Master Plan, which projects the educational and facilities tools of our district to the year 2031. During this process, she facilitated eighty-nine community workshops, six campus-wide community outreach presentations, thirty-nine focus groups, and analyzed three thousand and eighty-two survey responders from students, employees, and the community. And whereas Brandy Delina also managed dozens of college facilities projects, some with problems contractors, and that's true, oversaw the demolition of nineteen former Marine Corps buildings at the ATEP Advanced Technology and Education Park that we own now in Tustin site, and managed a busy purchasing department that in 2011 processed more than six thousand purchases, totaling more than eight point five million dollars.
Eighty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. More than eighty-five million dollars. I didn't see, I thought there was a decimal point, but eighty-five million dollars. That's, and our budget is half a million, it's half a billion dollars. So, a billion here, a billion there, you know, soon we're talking about real money. Okay, and whereas Brandy Delina became a member of the ACBO Facilities Task Force, an advisory group to the state's chancellor office, providing a valuable voice for the district in the statewide facility planning issue and initiatives. And whereas Brandy Delina had an inspiring work ethic that garners respect district-wide, and her colleagues describe her as intelligent, caring, focused, hardworking, and positive. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Brandy Delina upon her achievement and with deserved recognition as the 2011 Outstanding Manager of the Year. And I have to say that whenever I'm feeling a little bit badly about what's going on or things aren't going my way in the district, I just look up Brandy and she's always got this enormous smile on her face. And I feel so much better, deep in my heart, I just feel better. So, this is really a well-deserved, and she saves an enormous amount of money for our district. She's, our new library is going to be fabulous. I could go on and on, but I won't.
All right, we need to have.
So, right now, we need to do, we need to have, we need to have Grace Garcia read, ask the board if they agree to this resolution. Thank you.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
And student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Brandy, Brandy, do you have any supporters or family members that you want to introduce, please? I think that would be really wonderful now.
No family members. The supporters that I would like to introduce is John Ozerovich, who's the director of facilities with Saddleback College. And John Edwards is the director of facilities over at Irvine Valley College. And of course, Gary and my boss Deborah, I mean, people here at the college. When you read all these things, I was just a spoke on a wheel of a lot of people.
Well, you're wonderful, and every single person you mentioned is wonderful also. So, I'm happier than I've ever been in the last twenty-six years as a trustee, so. Thank you very much.
Okay, there's a photo op.
Thank you, thank you.
Would you like to say a few words or not?
Let the chancellor handle it.
No, we're just, this is a photo op.
This is a photo op, the chancellor and Ms. Delina.
Yeah, we need to have the resolution up, there you go. Okay, congratulations again. All right, now we are at public comments. Do we have anyone wishing to make public comments? No, okay. And we will now move to reports. And we'll start with board reports. Trustee Jay.
No board report this evening. We're already very late.
Trustee Meldow.
Well, even with that admonition, I have to say a few words. First of all, I attended the Astounding Inventions Program at IVC, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing. If you've never been to it, please go to it to see those kids and their inventions and how proud they are. Just really makes your heart full. I also was lucky enough to be at the Freedom Foundation's George Washington Honorable Presentation for Saddleback College's Veterans Memorial. And again, that was a very stimulating and thrilling program. So, that was good. Then also, especially pleasing was the fact that I had a chance to meet with the vice chancellors and Brandy Delina and go through their programs. They showed me exactly what they did. I had a chance to talk to their staffs. And I'm telling you, I'm just proud of everyone here. They do a wonderful job. They have a wonderful staff that's really dedicated to this college, to the district. And I'd just like to say personally, thank you for the time and the effort that you took to make sure that I understand exactly what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchiker.
Aye, aye. I have to say also that it's really honest that in the twenty-six years I've been a trustee, I've never been happier. I think things are better now than they've ever been in twenty-six years. We have a great staff, great faculty, great students. We're hiring sixty new faculty members that with the salary we're offering are going to be the best in the world. And since nobody else is offering any jobs in the state, I think. So, we're going to get the best in the world. So, and hopefully, I know we're working, well, I'm not allowed to say this, but hopefully, we'll get the best classified in the world too, and we'll add to our classified staff also. But the most important thing I want to say is a very important person in my life drove me here today. And he's my best friend and my husband for thirty-eight years, Dr. Benjamin Milchiker, who's a board-certified internist and endocrinologist. And when I taught biology at Santa Ana College, he attended my classes twice a week for an entire year, just to sit in the back. So, here they had, for a part-time teacher's faculty salary, they had a research biologist, that's me, and my husband, who's a board-certified internist and endocrinologist, teach a class for a non-biology major, so lab class. So, please introduce Dr. Benjamin Milchiker.
Hello. Thank you.
Well, you're great, so we love you, we love each other very much.
Okay, and trustee Prendergast.
Yes, I too got to attend the Invention Convention. And I really appreciate the fact that I was the only one got the email that said there was a second session at two o'clock and got to speak on behalf of the district with like five minutes' notice. That was really awesome, thank you.
We knew you could do it.
Yeah, and then also attending the president's cup, the second game, it was very exciting. Some good action there, and some amazing comeback stuff. It was, wow. Very thrilling games, and congratulations to IVC again. And that's about it.
Thank you, okay. Well, I've had a very busy time, which I'm going to try to be brief about and share it with you. But I also attended the Astounding Inventions, and as usual, it was just wonderful. And also was able to attend the Emeritus Anniversary Tea, where they honored Dorothy Marie Lowry. And I believe that her donations now are up to, is it two million? Yeah, two point two million to the Emeritus Program, which is just amazing and incredible. I was able to attend the Freedom Foundation Award to the Veterans Memorial at Saddleback College, along with several people in this room. And I have a plaque that was given to Saddleback College honoring Saddleback College Veterans Memorial. So, we got many, many certificates and plaques, and it was just an amazing day for those of us who were there. So, I'm sorry that you couldn't all be there, but it was a great event and a great honor. I went with the chancellor and with our public information person, Terry Fugerman, to Washington DC to lobby on behalf of community colleges. There was a convention with representatives all over the United States from community colleges. And we were all organized to lobby on behalf of funding for community colleges. The cut in the Pell Grants was a big part of our agenda, as well as veterans programs. And one of the things that we came away learning was that veterans are really struggling with some of the cuts that have occurred with modifications that have happened to the GI Bill and programs. So, we're all going to be wanting to work on that. And later on in the agenda, I will be asking for a special board report to come back to us on our two veteran center centers and maybe opening up a different center or an additional center at ATEP. So, I attended the president's cup. I also attended the Saddleback College Basketball Men's Playoff on Wednesday night. And now they are in a higher-level playoff, I'm not sure what the exact term is, for Friday night. So, that's very exciting. So, I had a very busy time, and I appreciate the chancellor's help at the Washington Conference. The Legislative Task Force is an active group that is made up of the four community college districts in Orange County. And we get together to try to combine efforts to press forward issues for the community colleges in Orange County. So, it's a very good group, and I'm proud that we're a participant in that. That's my report.
I left something, I left something out of my report, so I wanted to say it.
If you could just wait till we get to the end, we'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, trustee Lang.
Yes, no report this evening.
Okay, and our student trustee Larson.
Hello, good evening. Just a quick comment. I just wanted to recognize the importance of the Study Abroad Program to Salamanca, Spain. One of my close friends actually did the trip, I call it a trip because he had such a great time on it, at it. But anyways, he changed tremendously in the positive. He's established many connections overseas. And he is a new person with new ideas, very positive influence that this trip has given him. And I would just like to recognize the importance of it. And that is all, thank you.
That's great, I know, our Study Abroad programs are wonderful. Thank you for that highlight. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to echo what trustee Larson said. I've seen him as a lifeguard in San Clemente. And he's also, there's a lot of swimming. And he's also ran for the student trustee in the state. He didn't make it, but he's our only trustee in the twenty-six years I've ever experienced running for the state trustee, and I'm really, really proud of him. And he also helped me, when I was president of the Audit Committee, he helped me with that too. So, I really, I needed a lot of help. So, I really appreciated his help.
Thank you.
One more word is I attended Rich McCullough's celebration of his life, and I was able to speak. And Rich McCullough was one of the favorite, my favorite people ever, maybe the favorite person I've ever known at the district. I loved him, and I was able to speak. And I was very happy to say some wonderful things about Rich that nobody else said. I just wanted to say, I also couldn't attend the meeting in Washington DC. I'm very, very delighted that the chancellor and our board president and our PIO officer went. Lobbying is so important. I had eye surgery the week that they had the Washington DC conference, and that's why I couldn't attend any of the conferences at all this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, all right. We are now at the chancellor's report.
Okay. First, I see sitting in the audience a new employee that we have. And I don't think there's any other plan on the agenda to introduce her. But sitting next to Carol Hilton back here, wave your hand, Kim. Is Kim, and she went and changed her darn name on her. I've known her a lot of years, it's McCabe, McCord, I'm sorry. And as you know, she's the District Director of Fiscal Affairs, and she's replacing Beth Muller, who was our fine director that just recently left. We're very pleased to have Kim, and you'll be seeing more of her, I'm confident.
Welcome.
Two highlights in the meeting tonight that I'd like to bring your attention to. And they have to do with accreditation and some strategic planning that we did. The first is item 4.1, that's coming up real soon on the agenda, discussion item on the administrative regulation on basic aid allocation. And we had comments in the accreditation recommendations about transparency and budgeting. And the board has adopted already a board policy. And this is the implementation administrative regulations. So, this is important in completing that task. And the second has to do with putting some organization into the ATEP site development and agreement on what programs are going to be offered there. And item 6.1 is an agenda item for the, to obtain board approval for the initial programs and services that will be offered there.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We're now at board requests for reports. And trustee Prendergast.
Get mine in because yours is probably going to overshadow it. Yeah, I'd like to actually segue off to what chancellor Portner was saying about the master plan and so forth at the district level, as well as the college level. And the fact that Brandy is here, and we celebrated her achievements. I have some information on an opportunity that we may want to take advantage of. And I will get this information to you as soon as the meeting breaks up. Every four years, the US Swimming holds the Olympic Trials. This year, they're in Omaha. And in doing so, there's a company called Murtha that builds these pre-built fifty-meter pool shells. And they create a stadium just for this event. And then when the event's over, they sell the shells. And so, it's my understanding that one of the shells is still available, and it might be an opportunity to save some money at a fifty-meter pool at IVC. So, I'd like to pass this information on so you can get in contact and maybe see what the feasibility is. Plus, the, my understanding of the groups, Ermine Novas and some other groups in the Irvine area are very interested in helping financially with the project as well. And this might be an opportunity to get that ball rolling with that coming up this summer.
Is this a request for a report? Because that's where we are on the agenda.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, do you want to report back on this?
Correct.
Okay. It should probably happen quickly.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I have a request for a report, also.
I'm not doing that, okay? Your turn will come, okay? I have a request for a report, which is to have our two colleges make presentations for discussion on their two veterans programs. There are, we learned in Washington DC that there are some benefits that we are unaware of here for our veterans. So, I think our chancellor has passed that on. But I think that there's a tremendous need to try to expand those programs and to develop them to serve better our veterans. In addition, I think we need to look at what we can do at ATEP. So, I would like to have the two presidents come forward with whoever they would like in the veterans program to make that presentation. And hopefully, it could be a combined report. And then we can look at what we may need to do as a result of that with the chancellor's help. And you may also want to include ATEP in some of that, too. So, that's my request for a report. And trustee Milchiker, it's your turn.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with both of the requests for reports. I think they're both excellent ideas. I have a request for a report on what's happening statewide with the future of the Emeritus Institute. I know that Rich McCullough started a foundation, two foundations, they started two scholarships. One was money for the Veterans Memorial that he created and he built on Saddleback College. And I'm donating to that. And I'm also starting a foundation for the Emeritus Institute. I wasn't, there was a lady in the community that donated two million dollars that Nancy Padberg was able to attend, and I could not attend because I had just had eye surgery. So, I couldn't go to it. But she donated two million dollars for the Emeritus Institute. So, I want all of our people to know that the Emeritus Institute will be going for a very, very long time. Because that two million dollars, plus the foundation I'm starting, and I'm going to give a donation in memory of Rich McCullough also in it, will help keep the classes going. And that's what, that's what my foundation.
Are you asking for a report? That's what this agenda item is.
And I'm asking for a report because I know that if they don't allow us to offer these classes, and we have the money to give these classes, and these classes actually make money for our district. And if they don't allow our trustees the power to offer these classes, it's going to take power away from our Board of Trustees. So, I want a report on what's happening statewide with this particular bill. Thank you.
What bill are you talking about?
The, this, it's not a bill yet, but it will be a bill. It was, it was a report that was done for the Student Success Project, and it will be made into a bill. And just like AB 1725 was created right when I was, became a trustee, and they were going to cut the Emeritus Program out of the community colleges, AB 25. And I worked to keep it in, and I'm going to work to try to keep it in this bill that's going to be created.
All right, we do need to vote on these requests. So, we're going to go back to the request by trustee Prendergast for the pool report. And we'll get to you, trustee Meldow, I haven't forgotten you. So, would the trustees vote on whether they would like to approve the request for a report by trustee Prendergast on the pool that?
Point of order, Madam President.
Yes.
My recollection is that we had a.
My recollection is that we had a specific process for.
There is a form, yes.
Making board reports and that was, there was a form on which it was clearly articulated what the specific report was that was being requested.
Right.
Which I think I would find quite helpful.
Yes.
In order to understand the various reports that are being requested and therefore vote on those reports.
You are correct. And maybe what we could do is have all of those who have presented their request tonight fill that form out and then we'll vote on it next month.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, we'll go to trustee Meldell.
Yes, as a, as a parent and an educator and a psychologist, I was extremely upset to see today that we had another shooting in Ohio in a high school with five students wounded and one killed. That prompted me to go back and we have talked this briefly before, but I would like a report on safety issues on both campuses and what we're doing to provide for the safety of our students and our staff. And I understand that this has to be somewhat circumspect, but I think that the community would benefit from knowing that we are taking this seriously and that we are making plans and that we have good plans in place already.
Thank you for that. We will get the forms to each one of you and have you fill it out and then bring it back to the next meeting for a vote. All right. And with that, we are at our discussion items, 4.1. And that will be presented by vice chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons. It is the Basic Aid Allocation Process Report, or Discussion.
All right, sorry about that. We had to get ourselves set up here. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting to you the administrative regulation 3110 for the basic aid allocation. First of all, before we start, I wanted to introduce the Basic Aid Administrative Regulation Work Group that worked under the auspices of the Board Policy Administrative Regulation Advisory Council. They were tasked with the pleasure of trying to develop this AR and then work it interactively through all the campus participatory governance groups, get input multiple times and come to the point where we are able to get a sort of compromised draft of this administrative regulation to present to you today for your input. So we have here by Brandy, Brandy Delena, we have John Edwards, we also have Kim McCord, Carol Horton, Devit Kavatchan and John Izurvich. They've all were part of the Basic Aid Administrative Regulation Work Group. And they, we spent many hours, we started out with a kickoff session of pretty much almost all day long to start the process off and work with the presidents and with all the different groups to get this through. Also participating with the academic senate and a variety of the other participatory groups. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize them because of their hard work doing this particular AR. Okay. First of all, why are we doing this AR? As Gary has already mentioned previously, we're, we had a recommendation from accreditation folks who came here and it was recommendation number two. And it specifically said that the district and the colleges need to develop and implement a resource allocation model driven by planning that includes all district funds, is open, transparent, inclusive, widely disseminated, and reviewed evaluated periodically for effectiveness. So as you know, we needed to start with something. We needed to have, based on general consensus of the input across the district, we had a work group that was formed through the accreditation committees. And they determined that the issues are not necessarily with the DRAC model itself, but with the allocation of the basic aid resources. So that group developed an illustrated model to provide information regarding planning of resources for better communication. And they're also instrumental in getting BP 3110, the board policy that you approved in August, developed. And then the AR was the next natural step in the implementation. This is the work group, this is the illustration that they developed and as you can see, we're specifically talking about the basic aid, which is in the center of the drawing in the green box. And the basic aid projects underneath the arrow shows the different projects that are going to be part of the BP. And then we also had the various planning documents that would be used for both the DRAC model and the basic aid. Now, the BP that was approved in August specifically stated several things that we had to follow. It was to be based on planning documents. The board would determine the timing and how much allocated for basic aid for each year. And a reasonable amount of money needed to be not allocated because we need to make sure that we had availability of resources or be able to address potential unexpected needs. It also said that we were going to allocate on five things. First of all, capital construction, major renovation, large infrastructure projects and site development. And to also follow district and college strategic plans, the EFMP, the 20-year facility renovation scheduled maintenance plan and the fiber construction plan for those types of projects. It also stated that we would have to also fund retirement benefit trust fund and other long-term obligations from basic aid and address trustee elections, legislative advocacy and major legal fees and judgments. Major technology initiatives as identified in district and college tech plans. And also lastly, 50% match funds for scheduled maintenance and small renovation projects. And that could also include maintenance equipment as part of those projects and they needed to be identified in the 20-year facilities renovation and scheduled maintenance plan. And the other 50% of those needed funds would be funded by the college. And the allocation would be based on the DRAC ratios used in the model for the scheduled maintenance funds. So what we had to do was, here's an illustration that shows a flow chart that basically describes the various plans that we used in determining the allocations. Those plans have priorities within them. And it also shows the other things that were feeding into the basic aid allocation recommendation committee, such as determination of the property tax revenues and whatnot. Recommendations would go to the chancellor and into the board. So with all that as a basis for the AR to be formulated, the AR then follows the BP 3110 and it will accumulate in a master list of projects to be funded by basic aid, which follows the budget cycle. The allocation cycle will conform with the budget development cycle. So that means in June, in August, when we bring the tentative budget and the final budget, that's when you'll see the recommendations for basic aid included in that particular packet. It's going to be linked to the property tax schedule as you can imagine and the conservative estimates will be used for the property tax estimates. Unless there's an emergency situation, the cycle will be followed. A committee is going to be formed that's called the Basic Aid Allocation Recommendation Committee, BARC. And it's a district-wide participatory governance committee whose role is to implement the basic aid allocation process. Charged with implementing both BP 3110 and the AR 3110. This utilizes, this group will utilize plans developed by the other district-wide councils and committees. And this is important because they're not going to be reprioritizing things that are already, they're not going to be changing work already been done by the other committees. The plans are being done at the college level and brought up through to the district-wide basis and they're not going to change the order of those priorities. That work's being done in the planning committees. They're going to follow the annual basic aid allocation cycle, which follows the budget cycle. BARC composed of 17 positions, so it's a very large participatory governance committee. The vice chancellor of business, which is myself, the chair, the two vice presidents of instruction, the directors of facilities at both the colleges, the district director of facilities and the fiscal director, and the directors of the fiscal services at both the colleges. Also, there's going to be four faculty, the academic senate presidents and reps. There's going to be the vice chancellor of technology and learning services. And then there's the classified senate representatives or the representatives and the CSEA rep. If you turn to page 3 of 7 of the AR in your packet, you can see that, how the allocation amounts are determined is first of all, a conservative estimate of the property tax assets is calculated. The unallocated balance from the previous year is added to the estimated current year balance to get a total estimated property taxes for basic aid. So we get to a total amount. What happens then is we're recommending that a contingency for unrealized tax collection is calculated, which is no less than 20% of the total. And that's put aside. The amount available then for allocation is no more than 80% of the total estimated property taxes for basic aid. The committee then can, is authorized to make recommendations on a master list for basic aid funding of 80% or less of that amount. On page 4 of 7, you can see that required amounts for long-term obligations such as retirement benefit liability and other fixed expense commitments such as advocacy and legal costs will be funded first because they're liabilities and they're not necessarily discretionary liabilities, okay? Then the remaining balances will be funded. A for capital construction, major renovation, large infrastructure and site development. B for major technology initiatives and C for the scheduled maintenance and small renovation projects and maintenance equipment. So it's sort of in that order. Page 5 of 7 of the AR, we're taking, the idea is the majority portion of the basic aid is intended for areas of capital construction, major renovation, large infrastructure and site development. And that the allocation of scheduled maintenance will be based on the distribution ratios between the colleges used in the DRAC model for specific projects. Also, as part of the allocation process, we defined facilities terms and you'll see them in your packet. It took us quite a while to come across with, it was very important to have common definitions for all the capital outlay terms, for the scheduled maintenance terms and have them defined so there's a common understanding across the district what we were referring to. The capital improvement committee, which is an existing committee, we call it KIC, will be the district-wide participatory governance committee responsible for definitions of capital construction and other facilities related terms. And those are included as part of this AR. Common definitions were important for transparency and to make things clear across the district. The allocations must be used within five years on a specific project for which funding was approved. That's part of the AR. And then any remaining funds returned to the basic aid fund for relocation in next year. They aren't kept at the college. Also, as part of the allocation process, BARC can recommend funding for a project that has phases over multiple years if appropriate. They must rely strongly upon existing priorities in the plan documents. However, they may have to consider total allocation amount, queuing of projects for state funding consideration, phasing considerations, cash flow, and melding the various plans into one recommended list for basic aid allocation recommendations. So it's important that we follow the priorities within existing plans, but there might be reasons such as timing of a project, you know, which includes phasings of a project, state funding situation and whatnot, that there might be reasons why something might have to be phased over time or might go out of the order, but it has to be justified. Capital projects will also include a change order contingency, that's really important to this process, that we have that available in the budget. Also, any major tech project for consideration for funding must be included in the district-wide tech plan and must clearly be a one-time project. It needs to be, it needs to include a clear description, a detailed scope, a specific dollar amount. And if phases, it must be outlined, just like the capital projects. Ongoing maintenance not to be included, not to be funded by basic aid. And changes and or enhancements or added features to projects must require a new request and cannot be funded through original project allocation. Okay? The basic aid recommendations will be made to the chancellor, who will share and confer with the presidents before making final recommendations to the board of trustees. In that report that the chancellor will be given, it'll be a master listed project with project description and recommended amount and scope. He will receive, any future phases will be clearly disclosed with project, projected future costs and timing. BARC will have a cover letter and a narrative report explaining the process that they used, their considerations and any background the chancellor should have. And if the chancellor recommends any changes to the BARC's recommendation, the chancellor will clarify the changes and explanations prior to their being included in the tentative and final budget for the board of trustee approval. If for any reason consensus cannot take place in BARC, the chair will bring issues to the chancellor, who will be authorized to make the final decision. Also included in the process for basic aid is an evaluation. There will be an evaluation of the BP 3110 and the AR for effectiveness and adherence to the policy in the AR. Once a year, it'll take place and it'll be open and transparent process and there'll be recommendations for improving or adjusting the process. Communication of the results of the assessment will be widely disseminated and any adjustments to the process will make sure that they're kept within the intent of the BP and AR. Where can you find more information? We have SharePoint links already set up for various committees. BARC just got its SharePoint site set up and it's on the district-wide website with their other district-wide committees. And this is the list of the new founding members of the BARC group listed here, many of which are in your audience tonight. The first meeting is going to be held on March 9. So that's the process in a nutshell and I'll be willing to take any questions, plus all the folks here on the Basic Aid Recommendation Work Group are here and they can also speak on the colleges' perspective as well.
Okay, thank you very much. We have trustee Melchek, wanting to speak?
First of all, I'm just so delighted that we hired Deborah Fitzsimmons for our new vice chancellor. She's done an incredible job and she also showed me how to use SharePoint, which is very, very important. And she also puts all her PowerPoint presentations on SharePoint. So if I don't understand them, I look them up again and I go through them again and I call her and she always answers my questions. So I just want to thank you very much. Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'd also like to congratulate you, Deborah, and all the members of the committee. I think you did a terrific job in both developing the board policy as well as this administrative regulation. I do have a couple of comments that I did want to share though in going through the language that's in the, in the, I guess it's administrative regulations that we're saying One is, I know that under our matching program for scheduled maintenance and smaller renovation projects, we've indicated that those allocations ought to be used within five years, which frankly, I find that to be a fairly generous number since that is intended to be for smaller type projects, not the big capital projects. So, you know, I'll just throw that out there in terms of my perception. But then, in addition to that, I think that we ought to have some mechanism for tracking those projects that occurs and that information to be shared with the board in terms of what those funds are being used for, how much has been expended, you know, where those dollars have gone and so forth and so on. So that would be something that I'd like to see as a follow-up to this. Couple of items are just of a minor nature that I'll provide some information to the chancellor about. There is, in one part where we talk about no more than 80% of total estimated tax amount available for basic aid, and that maybe should be clarified just to say in any particular fiscal year, I think would be a helpful add to, I think that's 4E is where I saw that. We talk about this, again, this concept that allocations be used within five years on specific projects for which funding was approved under, let's see if I can find that Looks like E6, I think. But it seems to me earlier that that was intended to apply for those matching funds and here it's not clear that that's just specific for that category of basic aid funding. and here it's not clear that that's just specific for that category of basic aid funding. And I don't think this is intended to be for the other basic aid funding that we do, but I'd be interested to hear your comments about that.
From my understanding, and I think it currently is in place, and Brandy can correct me if I'm wrong, we have that. It's sort of part of our process that we're currently doing, and all basic aid funds are to be used in five years, so they go back. If we can't use them, if for some reason that a project is going to be extended longer, then we have to bring something back to the board. And so this was intended for all projects that are being funded for basic aid regardless of the type, and it wasn't just specific to scheduled maintenance. And then for the scheduled maintenance report, all basic aid funds will be included on that monthly basic aid report, including the scheduled maintenance projects that get funded. Remember, even though it's going to be allocated based on the DRAC model, it does have to be project-specific. And so they will have a project name and number, and you'll be able to see what's being spent on that project for scheduled maintenance.
Do we not have a number of projects that have been on that list for longer than five years? Seems to me we do.
We don't believe so.
I don't remember that coming back to the board.
I can confirm on that, but I know moving forward, that's why this is so specific. Moving forward, we've heard some of the board's concerns and other people's concerns across the district, and this is going to be very transparent where the money is, how it's being used, and then if it's not being used, it'll go back to the board.
Okay. Because it seems to me that some funding for major capital projects certainly are the types of projects that may take longer than that. And so, again, just maybe you want to think about that a little bit in terms of what our practices currently and whether that's, how that's in fact playing out with the projects that we've currently allocated basic aid funding to. On E, I think it's 10, I'd just like to make a brief comment about the major technology projects. You know, one of the things that I'm fairly proud of in this district is that I consider that we've really been on the cutting edge in terms of some of the technology initiatives that we had with this district. And frankly, I congratulate our vice chancellor, Bob Vermucci, for his leadership in that area. And so I want to make sure that technology, major technology projects are not given short shrift. We talk about dollars being allocated here for one-time projects, but I would not want to see some of the projects that, in fact, we have funded in the past, again, go by the wayside because they're not one-time projects. So I'll just throw that out again for the committee's consideration. And I think that was all I had in the way of comments.
I'd just like to add that we have an item on the agenda every single meeting, which is the basic aid report. Tonight at 7:03, and we generally just kind of gloss over that, but I think it would be good to have our vice chancellor, business services, do a verbal summary of that every meeting so that we can pay a little more attention to that basic aid report and any of these particular projects.
Sure.
You can do that. Trustee Pennergas.
Yeah, and in addition to that, maybe, I know that it's a very simple thing to do, but like when there's a change, there's bolded.
I like it, yeah. Actually, I just added that on the last month's report, on the very back page, we have changes. If you see this month's basic aid report, though, it looks identical to last month's because we had no changes. So it's basically the same report. But that new little table at the end is very helpful, and we're also going to add a line. If there's any significant changes, the dollar amount, we're going to add that in the memo as part of the narrative as well.
Well, maybe tonight at 7:03, you can spend a little time.
Sure.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other questions, so we'll move right on with our agenda. Thank you. And before we go to our next discussion item, I'm going to advance 6.6. We have a lot of people here who are waiting for that particular item. So our vice chancellor, Bouguet, would you present that?
Item 6.6 is the annual report about probationary.
Could you get closer to your mic? Thank you.
Apologize. It is about the annual report on probationary faculty, and as the board may recollect, it's a four-year process, which involves, in essence, three different contracts we have with faculty as they go through. And so at this moment, you'll see there's, as you go through the item on 6.6, there's a section for first-year faculty, and then second-year faculty, and then third-year faculty, and then finally, we hit the group of fourth-year faculty. And once the board approves this item tonight, the fourth-year faculty will become full-time tenured faculty in the fall of next year. So they won't officially become tenured until that date. I do have one minor change. If you look on exhibit A on the fourth year, we've missmelled one of our four-year faculty member, Frank Gonzalez. It's, and it's a matter of, we put a Z instead of a, an S instead of a Z. The last name is G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z is the proper spelling. But he is one of our full-time faculty members that the colleges are recommending for tenure. So ideally, if we'd like to have the board vote, and then if, Madam Chair, if you want to recognize the ones that are here tonight, they'd be very appropriate.
Okay, very good. Any comments or questions about this item? All right, trustee Lang.
Just a quick question. Were there members of the faculty that were not recommended for tenure? I'm not asking for specific names.
Not this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's all vote on the item.
I need a motion.
I'm sorry. Oh, would you like to make a motion, trustee Lang?
Sure.
Okay. Seconded by trustee Pennergas. All right, let's vote. Okay, carries unanimously with one trustee absent, one student advisory, yes vote. So if someone could please introduce the faculty members who are here that were just approved for tenure. Do we have someone who can do that? Okay, Jim Wright, Dr. Wright. There you go.
I already have all of them standing.
Okay, great. And maybe as you introduce them, they could wave their hand or something so we know who's who.
You know what? Why doesn't each faculty member introduce themselves and then give us their discipline?
Trustee Melchecker.
Because I'd like to get to know them, okay?
Trustee Melchecker, let's just wait till you get recognized. All right, go ahead.
I'm Karen Lee.
Thank you.
Robert Farin, Department of State Design.
Louis Stevens.
Ms. Global, Department of Defense.
Great. Welcome aboard. Thank you so much, trustee Melchecker. You haven't been recognized.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't mean to make this meeting longer. I'm really not going to say much more of this whole meeting, but I just want to say that it was really important to me that all the faculty we hire are the best and the brightest in the world. And I know you guys are the best and the brightest, and I can't wait to get to know you and maybe take your classes in the future. Thank you.
All right, we are now at discussion, second discussion item, and that is an IVC item. So who will be presenting that?
Presenting tonight, we have Professor Jody Titus, and she's the chair of our Curriculum Committee. And I would like to thank Jody for being out here tonight to do this.
And this item is the curriculum review process. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
We need you to get closer to the mic.
There we go. Thank you. Tonight, I'm doing the summary report. We just finished our Fall 2012 catalog, so we wanted to let you know what we had accomplished this past year.
I'm sorry, could you just restate your name for the record?
Jody Titus.
And your position?
Geography, and I'm the curriculum chair.
Great, go ahead.
This year, we have 12 new and 40 revised programs for a total of 52 programs. 61 new, 70 revised, 48 deletions, and 38 technical changes in courses for a total of 217. And we are very pleased to complete the transfer model curriculum degree for theater arts this year. And as far as CurriculumNet, we are fully utilizing it for course and program proposals, and the faculty have become very proficient with it. I've had very few problems now. I'm just basically training new faculty when necessary. So we're really at a maintenance point now with CurriculumNet and, as well as curriculum. So that's where we're at right now. Are there any questions?
Is that your report?
That's my report. That's what we did, yeah. I tried to keep it succinct and a summary. But I'd be happy to give you more information.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. All right, we are now at the consent calendar, and do I have a motion to approve the consent? Okay. I would like to pull three items, or four, actually, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.9, all of which I am going to vote to approve, but I think they're just too important not to publicly recognize them, so we could.
I have, sorry.
Okay, trustee Lang.
I have 5, 7, 8, and 11.
Any other items?
I'm sorry, and 25.
And Pori?
5.25.
5.25. Okay. Okay, so your motion, I assume, will be with all those items excluded. All right. And is there a second to your motion?
I'll say.
Okay, seconded by trustee Pennergas. So let's vote on the consent calendar excluding all of those other items. Trustee Melchecker, you need to vote.
Thank you.
All right, matter carries unanimously with one absent trustee and student advisory, yes vote. Okay, so let's see. 5.3 is a Saddleback College grant acceptance for Pathways. It's $250,000 from the California Community College Chancellor's office. And again, if we could vote on my items en masse, that would be great because I just really want the public to know how well we're doing with grants. 5.4 is Saddleback College grant acceptance for career technical education. This is to accept an award of $411,350 from the California Community College Chancellor's office. And 5, let's see, I did pull 5.5 because that has to do with a grant, and it's to approve the contract for consultant in the amount of $26,000 for the National Science Foundation grant. And 5.9 is a grant, sub-grant award, North Orange County Community College District New Media Entertainment Sub Grant Award for $2,500 for IVC. So we could vote on those, 1, 2, 3, 4 items? Do I have a motion for that?
Oh.
5. Okay, you want to address 5.9 separately?
Can you support the motion to approve those other criteria?
Okay, so.
All right, I'll move that we approve 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so let's vote on the item. Okay, carries unanimously with one trustee absent and a student advisory, yes vote. So let's go to 5.9 so you can make your comments. Well, I just wanted to get rid of these. Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. The only issue that I had with 5.9 was, this was a grant that started in July of 2011 and ends in June of 2012. So we're more than halfway into the grant period, and this is just coming to the board. And I just don't think that's appropriate, but I will support approval.
Okay. Did you want to comment about that, President Rockmore?
I believe this is, we're in the fifth year of a five-year grant, at best of my recollection. Let me check with my vice president on that. I do know that the New Media grant has been around for quite a bit of time.
Okay, but exhibit A shows the starting and ending dates of the project as being 7/1/11 to 6/30/12.
If I could clarify?
Yes.
The grant was in place, but this is a subcontract for a portion of work being done through North Orange County. And so, yes, the subcontract is just being brought to you to be approved. And sometimes that happens with subcontracts between two districts. It takes a little while for the two districts to work out the wording and develop the scope of the project. So even though it technically does say 7/1, the work, it's just being brought forward for you to be approved through this fiscal year.
Okay. Did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay. All right, so seeing no other comments, let's vote on 5.9. We'll go back to and pick up the others that are needing to be voted on. Do we have a motion, trustee Lang?
Yes.
Okay, moved and seconded by trustee Maldow. Okay, so let's vote on the item. Trustee Melchecker. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and a student advisory, yes vote. Okay, so now we are at 5.7 and 5.8, I believe. 5.7, 5.8 pulled by trustee Lang.
I suppose I can address both those items together. It just appeared from the language in here that we were dealing with a problem contractor here, and I think the problem did not lie with the particular providers of the services that were in these items, but rather somebody else. But I just wanted to get a little more clarification from that. 5.7 indicates that we are looking to back-charge the contractor. There is no, oh, actually, both items indicate that. And so I wanted to find out what the prospects of our succeeding in that regard are. Perhaps you can address that.
Okay, you're absolutely correct. The problem does not lie with the contractor that we're asking for increase. It's with the general contractor. Further evidence of the problems with the economy, delays in construction, and the need, these are inspection services, and inspection services are evaluated based on what's gone before. What's happening now is a new arena for us, taking a little bit longer. The prospects of regaining this money, all of it, we won't get all of it back. There will be a loss to the district as a result of these delays, but we'll definitely attempt to get some of it back in negotiations.
Okay. And also, we were looking at moving to a different sort of contract system where we weren't necessarily going to be always accepting low bid, but rather choosing contractors that perhaps we were from an approved list, we felt were responsible, we wouldn't run into these problems again. Where are we at in that?
Well, we've gained approval from the board to move forward with lease-leaseback as an alternative delivery method. Another alternative delivery method that we'll be bringing forward to you in the very near future is called design-build, and that is a method where the contractor and the architect work together as a team with the district. And it's a, there's a prequalification that happens with that as well. So I'd say within the next two months, you'll see us provide you with, I think it needs to be a resolution for moving forward with a design-bid delivery alternative. As far as leaseback is concerned, we're hoping to use that delivery method on the Saddleback Sciences building, which should also come to you in the next few months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll move approval of both these items.
Okay, moved and seconded by trustee Pennergas. Let's vote on 5.7 and 5.8. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and student advisory, yes vote. We are now at 5.11, pulled by trustee Lang. The Life Sciences. Could you speak into your mic? Okay.
Different contractor, different project, similar problems. But here, we don't talk at all about even attempting to back-charge the contractor, and just wondering about that.
Different project managers, Walt saw fit to put it in his Saddleback review to you, that it would be negotiated, and the same thing will be true. Same song, different dance. Absolutely, we will be working toward getting these costs back.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll move approval.
5.11, okay, moved and seconded by trustee Pennergas. Let's vote on the item. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent, one student advisory, yes vote. Now the last one, 5.25, pulled by trustee Lang.
Yes, my reason for pulling this is that I am going to abstain from the specific, I guess I'm looking for guidance. I guess what I'm asking is maybe to divide the question on this to remove hall informant from that list so that I can abstain since I have an independence issue with that contractor.
Okay. I have no objection to that, but I do need to have a motion just to divide the question, and then we can vote. Moved by trustee, what is your name? Jay.
He's the new guy.
You're too quiet, trustee Jay. Okay. And seconded by?
Second.
Meldow, trustee Meldow. So we will vote on dividing the question. All those, please Trustee Jay. All right, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and a student advisory yes. So we will divide the question and vote on hall informant separate from the rest of the item. Now I need a motion for the entire item.
Second.
Trustee Lang moved the item.
I appreciate it.
And a second by trustee Meldow. So we're voting on everything but the hall informant matter. So let's vote on the item. Trustee Jay, thank you. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes. Now we're going to vote on the hall informant part of this item. I need a motion, please, just for that part. Trustee Jay and seconded by trustee Prendergast. Let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with one abstention, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. We are now finished with the consent calendar, and we are on item 6.1. And that is the Saddleback Irvine Valley College courses, programs, and services offered at ATEP. And do, this is an action item for approval. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Trustee Jay moved the item and trustee Lang seconded. Who is going to present this item? Okay, both presidents, here we go.
Okay. This item has been reviewed thoroughly by Irvine Valley College through several iterations through our governance groups. And it's been fully vetted, and we agree with the material that's presented there. We're very happy to be in this relationship.
Okay.
Likewise, and I want to congratulate our district services, Irvine Valley College and Saddleback for coming together with absolutely terrific future plans for the ATEP development project. We at Saddleback are very excited about the new Center for Innovation in Healthcare Education, which, as you've already heard, was presented to you a few months ago. Thank you.
Super, thank you. All right, seeing no other comments, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. 6.2 is the Marion Bergerson Award nomination. And I will ask any trustees if they have someone they want to nominate for this award.
Would anyone like to be nominated? Because I don't. Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, I guess we will not make a recommendation.
Thank you.
So that item will go by the way. We are now at 6.3, and that's the OCBA Board of Directors Interest Form. If anyone is wishing to nominate a trustee to serve on the Board of Directors, then we have to transmit that, and then they get elected.
Would anyone like to do that?
Okay, just, let's wait.
I can't right now, so.
Okay. Okay, we see no one wishing to do that. Our jobs are, our lives are full. So we'll move on that to 6.4. And this is Board Policy Revisions. The chancellor recommends to board of trustees accept, force, review, and study Exhibit A.
6.4.
Okay. And a second by trustee Prendergast. Any questions? No. Trustee Lang.
Yes, quick question on Board Policy 4091. And that is, as I read through this item, I did not see there being any requirement that there actually be a need for the retreating person within the college's existing complement of programs. And I was hoping that maybe somebody might address that. At least I didn't see it specifically. It was sort of, you know, you could possibly get to that language there, I suppose, but...
It's like Vice Chancellor Big A is going to comment.
In this case, an administrator retreating back to the classroom is a provision provided in ed code. And it already provides that, that if there is a current opening, that they have, let's say, for instance, the administrator has a degree in nursing, okay, and they want to retreat back to the classroom. Well, the, number one, they can only retreat if the district wants them to retreat. And then, secondly, if there's not an opening, the district is not required to put them in it, in which case they would be terminated.
Okay, I just didn't, didn't see that
Correct.
exactly in the language that was here.
Right. And to be honest about it, this policy itself is a nice policy, but the reality ed code would dominate in any discussion pertaining to that. And that's at the very end of the policy.
So you're confident that instances like that would be covered by ed?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, it's been, it's been vetted many times in different systems, so to speak, so.
Okay, I see no other comments being requested. Let's vote on the item. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and a student advisory yes vote. 6.5 is for review and study.
Move acceptance for review.
Okay, and no, I have a second by trustee Jay and moved by trustee Lang. Seeing no comments, let's vote on the item. Trustee Melchiker, vote on the item, please. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one absent trustee and a student advisory yes vote. We've done 6.7, so we're now in 6.6, we're now in 6.7, Academic Personnel Actions.
I have one revision, Madam Chair.
Okay.
It's on the second page on Exhibit A, page 104. On the second equivalency, the second item on A1 on Gregorian's, that placement should be 1 slash, 1, or I slash 6, I apologize, not 6.
Oh, I slash 6 instead of 1, I slash 1.
Well, it should, no, it should be I slash 1, not 6. It currently says 6.
Where are you again?
What person?
On applicant Gregorian, it says highest degree MA Industrial Engineering. It's in the middle of the page.
And this is A1?
It's under A1, it's in the, it's down towards equivalency, in the middle of the page.
Oh, on page 1. I thought you said A1, okay. Oh, it is A1. There's another A1. New personnel appointments. Okay.
It kind of goes on.
It's continued, okay, I see.
So that particular one should be I slash 1.
Okay.
Other than that, the reports, the recommendations stand for the rest.
All right, moved by trustee Lang, seconded by trustee Meldow. Seeing no other comments, let's vote on the item with that change. Okay, carries unanimously with one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Okay, we are now at 6.8, which is Classified Personnel Actions. And no changes to this. Do you have a motion for this, please? Anyone want to move approval?
The item has...
Trustee Jay and trustee Prendergast seconded. No comments, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. And we are now at 6.9, which is the Organizational Assessment for Administrators and Classified Managers. And this is going to be presented by chancellor or by who?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
For about a year and a half, we've been involved in a classification study to review the positions of all classified management and administrators. And the recommendations now are coming from the consultant. And one of the recommendations is that we move from a system with different salary schedules for managers and administrators to one consolidated schedule. And so this is the first step in the process of looking at the consultant's recommendations, following the board's approval of the schedule tonight. Then what will start is the review period for the employees. So soon after tonight, the consultant will send the final position descriptions out to the employees that reviewed, along with information about what step or range they'll be placed on in the new salary schedule. And then they'll be given an opportunity, probably a couple of weeks, to submit any comments that they'd like to make.
Thank you. Any comments? Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, you know, it was reiterated today and last time when we got the presentation. I think it's pretty powerful that out of the 72 districts, 54 have done this. And of the 19 multi-college district, 16 are doing it. So I don't always like to do things because everyone else is doing it, but it does seem like a very reasonable move toward what seems to be working at other places.
Well, I would agree, and I think we've had a very good and responsible study done and that it supports this, so I will support it. Do we have a motion yet? No. Okay, trustee Prendergast moved the motion, seconded by trustee Lang. No other comments? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. And now we are at 7.1. And this is basically our information, let's see. Outside speakers that may be invited to speak, any comments or questions about that for Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College? Okay, this doesn't require action, so let's move on with 7.2. This is the ATEP Five-Year Site Development Plan and Timeline. Okay, seeing no comments or questions, we are now at 7.3, our Basic Aid Report. And I'll ask our Vice Chancellor of Services to comment about what she's done to update this.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that there is no change from this month's report from last month. However, I did want to point you to the last page. There's a little section that says Changes from the January Report. That's where you would see any changes that were made. So from month to month, they're going to be pulled out so you can see that recap at the bottom. We will also, in the narrative from now on, under status, talk about what those are. And so there's a little bit of an explanation there, too.
Great. All right, thank you. Seeing no comments or questions, we'll move on to 7.4, and that is the Facilities Plan Status Report. Comments or questions about that? Okay, seeing none. We are then at 7.5, that's the Monthly Financial Status Report. No comments or questions. 7.6, the Quarterly Financial Status Report. No questions or comments. We're at 7.7, the Quarterly Investment Report. It's a tough market, but it looks like we're hanging in there. Okay. 7.8, Retiree Trust Fund Report. Okay, no comments. We are now at our reports from our shared governance groups. So we will start this. Some have submitted written reports, but would like also to talk. So Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Thank you, Dan Walsh, Saddleback College Academic Senate. I wish to thank the IVC Academic Senate and the IVC Classified Senate for their support on the naming of the Saddleback Library. It's wonderful to see us think and work as a district, and I look forward to hearing their reports tonight. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And our Faculty Association?
The Faculty Association has no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
Irvine Valley College Academic Senate has no report this evening.
My goodness, okay. And Associate Vice Chancellor Economic Development at ATEP.
Thank you, no report.
My goodness. President, Irvine Valley College.
I have a quick report. First of all, I would like to thank President Patberg, Vice President Prendergast, and Member Meldow for attending the astounding inventions. It was the 25th year this year, and it was extra special to have one student who was a competitor in 2005, who actually did receive a patent for her invention. Allison Plett is her name. And the invention had to do with a device that should particularly a female swimmer, most likely, and in case she and her sister, would be swimming and hair would be drawn into the, to the drain. I don't have a swimming pool, so I don't know how that works exactly. But this device would actually trim off the hair that would go in there and otherwise trap the swimmer and perhaps cause a drowning. And so that has been patented. I think that's wonderful. I'm really excited to announce something to you tonight. You're going to hear more about it and perhaps next board meeting. But our very own Dr. Gwen Plano, Vice President for Student Services, recently received a Leadership Award for Administrative Excellence from the Association of the California Community College Administrators Association. And I had the honor of presenting that award last week, and it's quite a big deal. And so we congratulate her for that.
Absolutely.
That's my report, thank you.
President Burnett from Saddleback College.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, congratulations to all of our new tenured faculty, but in particular the 23 at Saddleback College, we're thrilled. Second, and I think Chancellor Patberg. President Patberg had already mentioned about the $2.2 million. As you may not know or know, that is the single largest gift in Saddleback's history. And we hope to have more like that in the future. As trustee Melchiker said, we are looking for ways to help supplement our programs and make our programs viable for the future, including, of course, our emeritus program. The Freedoms Foundation, you already heard, at Valley Forge, I brought the actual medal. This is the actual George Washington Honor Medal, so it's sitting right here, if anybody would like to see it. Amongst many other awards that were given, as trustee Patberg had mentioned, there were many.
Many.
But we had about 40 people from our college that were in attendance, and we were very proud of everybody. And thank you for trustee Patberg and trustee Meldow who were able to make it. We were, me and my executive team actually attended the Orange County Department of Education Annual State of Education, and I left reports up there for you on it. It was Bill Habermell, of course, our superintendent, and Lucy Dunn was the emcee, and many other prominent people in the education world were there, of course, had a sellout crowd. Just since we were kind of the people who were there, I just wanted to let you know that the quick message for him was is that Orange County is doing better relative to the rest of the state, but we have a long way to go to improve. His big three issues that are in here in the report is rethink, restructure, and rebound. He ended the thing talking about TLC, and it is not the TLC as we know. It is, stands for Total Local Control, is the issue that Orange County needs to be looking at from the federal government and state government. And finally, which I was very pleased about, is they focus time on that we need to have stronger connections and partnerships with our K-12 and our community colleges, which was a wonderful, of course, message coming from him at that point. Also, we are very excited. I have some of you, or if not everybody, received an email invitation. We are very honored that Saddleback College, and in particular, our allied health program, but we are going to be hosting the U.S. Secretary of Labor, Hilda Solis, at our campus next Monday, March 5. It'll be in this room, actually, from at 10 to 11 o'clock for a panel on the President's Council on Jobs and Competitiveness. Saddleback College recently, and you just approved tonight, L.A. Health Boots Camp Program, which they are focusing, and why they want to do it here at Saddleback, is an example of excellent training and CTE programs. As you know, the president has focused heavily on that, and of course, his cabinet secretaries and his administration are doing the same thing. So anyway, you're invited. Hopefully, you will be able to join us here. That really is a monumental opportunity for our college and district to have a U.S. Secretary actually attend here. So that will be here. It will be web videotaped and will be on a web stream as well, just for anybody that cannot attend. I should also mention that the, in addition to that, the Department of Labor will be issuing opportunities for $500 million in additional grants. So we're very pleased that hopefully by having the secretary here, that that might give us a little bit of in with our applications out there for those grants. Finally, this Wednesday, as trustee Patberg mentioned, our men won the basketball, men's basketball team won the conference, and will be playing in a preferred spot in the playoffs at Saddleback College on Wednesday at 7:00 PM against, once again, Riverside, who we'd already beat previously. So good luck to the Gauchos. Thank you.
Okay. And our Vice Chancellor Technology, Bob Berbichi.
No report.
No report.
Okay. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Dr. Bogdan.
This last year, human resources, we more than doubled our training opportunities to faculty and staff across the district, and one unexpected opportunity came with Saddleback College, where they wanted to do a how-to-get-a-full-time faculty job. So we ended up having a partnership with them last week Friday, and we anticipated 30, 40, 50 people. We had over 100 attend. We advertise it statewide on the registry, so it actually was available for anybody in the public. It'll also be shown on Channel 39. So that was a great opportunity for a good partnership, working with our adjuncts or whoever else showed up as well, to train them on the process. The other one is Trustee Malda showed up at the District Services and had a tour. That was rather delightful. We certainly appreciated that. If any board member wants to come, also, we even included a large dose of dark chocolate in the tour, so if anybody's interested, that would certainly be a lot of fun.
You know, I'm so delighted we chose Trustee Malda, because he is the most involved trustee. I used to be the most involved trustee, now he is. So... Okay. Thank you very much. Vice Chancellor of Design Services.
I just wanted to point out in my written report, I have a timeline in here for the EFMP and the SEQA process that goes with it. We were anticipating to bring both the EFMP and the SEQA to you for your approval, and have the public hearing for the SEQA in January. And due to traffic analysis that needed to be done for the cities of Irvine and Mission Viejo, that extended out the date. So we're going to be bringing those, both items, to you in April for your review and approval.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to say, welcome again to Kim Accord, who's our new District Fiscal Director. We're really excited to have her on board, and she's already jumping right in, and I'm keeping her very busy already, so. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. And I see we have no one from IVC Academic Senate, or Classified Senate, right? But we do have a CSCA president.
Yes. Good evening. CSCA is currently in the process of promoting informational video regarding a Maintenance and Operations Academy that they're hosting out in Las Vegas. The trainings will be offered by skilled union people, apprentices, journey-level schools, state and federal certified trainers, district administrators, staff members from CSCA, just to name a few. We hope that the members will have an opportunity to attend this great event, which will include classes in OSHA 10 certificate, training, forklift certification, plumbing, electrical, hazmat, among many others. And the event is co-sponsored by the California Department of Education, the California School Board Association, the Association of California Administrators in partnership with CSCA. And many of these trainings offered provide certification that was required by classifications. And these trainings are available at a much lower cost at the academy than others were charged. So we hope that people will be able to take advantage of this and support the staff in this great opportunity. On a different note, CSCA has been in negotiations with the district, and progress is being made with items that are mutually beneficial. We've conducted a full financial evaluation of the district with reviews of financial reports that you've submitted to the state, and subsequently, we have presented our initial financial proposal on behalf of our membership that we feel is fair and equitable, and we look forward to further bargaining and expect to come to an agreement that both sides can appreciate and support.
Great. Thank you. And we have Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening. My name is Don Minio, and first of all, while everyone's at spring break, it's our time that we have time frame service. So our in-service activity this year will be on Thursday, March 15, and we're very excited to use one of our local resources, the recreation areas, which will save the district money. But our theme for this year is Sound Body, Sound Mind, and Sound School, going to the, helping out the accreditation thought. Hopefully, it brings balance and a projection from classified of the fairness of how we make our decisions. Number two is, we actually supported the Classified Senate, I mean, the Academic Senate, of not renaming the library building, Mr. Ut. We would like to see some other name. Actually, our motion was just any other name. And one classified member came up to me after Dr. McCullough's celebration here, and asked me why would we consider naming the library after Dr. McCullough, since the addition to the Math Science Building will be probably in the far future, and his memory might dissipate by then. So I thought that was a good idea, and I thought I would bring it to you. And that's about it for the...
Okay. Thank you. And that concludes our meeting, but I would like tonight that we would close our meeting in memory of two of our former employees who recently passed away. First, our beloved Rich McCullough, former Saddleback College President, Professor, and colleague of, for 37 years, a man who touched many lives through his commitment to education. And second, former trustee Lee Rhodes, who served as both a member and vice president of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees from 1992 to 1996. We close our meeting tonight in their memory. Good night.
He was a wonderful guy. Wonderful.